All this meeting to order at six thirty two P M. We begin with public input. If there's anybody online. I don't think so. We move on to the student report. Sophie, all always screwed ups, okay?
Yeah.
There you go. That's the twenty twenty four. What present? Go ahead, Sophie.
So for some notable academic matters, midterms were last week and the second quarter finished. So now it's third quarter and semester two. Fine Arts is the middle school musical going on February first to the third. And then N E Voices is this Friday. I'm assuming that's an acapella group kind of competition, but some notable athletic matters. Girls place first in the state track relays on Friday and boys placed fourth for the relays on Friday. And then Unified Bocce Tournament will be Sunday, the twenty eighth. So miscellaneous, the rethinking power block process is being piloted right now. So there is some stricter rules against leaving without signing out. So I think it's gonna be good for our safety and making sure we know where everybody is, or at least the teachers know where everyone is. But Adventure Club is going to ski at Loon Mountain on February tenth. And then the Harvard Model U N trip is Thursday to Sunday this week. And for my student work report, I recently wrote an essay on women kind of going against social norms and how that's portrayed in poetry, where women talk about their mental health and certain aspects of the social norms and how they feel about it. And I got a hundred on it.
Nice. Congrats. Questions? Only a couple of questions. Do you know what country the Model U N team got?
It's on the tip of my tongue because I have a few friends that are in it.
They were Vatican last year, I think, right?
I think so.
They were Vatican one of the last two years. And so when they came here, they didn't, they weren't, didn't know, okay. And then.
It'll come to me now when I go to my car. I'm like, oh, I remember.
And then with like, so for semesters, like when you get into the older grades, do you have a lot of classes that are one semester or most of them year long? I'm just curious because I don't have any older kids.
Yeah, I think all of them are year long when you pass, I guess freshman seminar. I know in middle school, they like switch every semester, but all of my classes this year are year long.
A year long, okay. So no changing. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Sophie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Moving on nice and quick. We've no continued business. We go right to the new business. We're seeing is special town meeting coming up. As everybody may know, we have a meeting coming up. If you are, if you do happen to be listening, you should go to it because they need one hundred and fifty quorum in order to have the meeting. The question for here is should we take a vote to recommend or not recommend anything? Mr. McGowan pointed out very astutely that agenda items two and three, we really shouldn't vote on because we don't have the specific numbers yet. I think he and I have heard some of the things that are going to be in there. So I was thinking that I sort of know what's coming up, but I think we should probably vote to recommend those ones when we hear the numbers because they're amendments to the operating budget and the capital budget that we approved in the last meeting. So.
Right.
The only other question is on the, on the, the main purpose of the special town meeting, which is to acquire property that is adjacent to Ipswich River. I guess the first question is, should we vote to recommend or not recommend? Should we take a vote at all? And then if we take a vote, what, how do we want to vote? So my thought would be, a lot of times we don't vote to recommend purchasing property if the town does that. My thought on this is, I think this property is, is unique because it's adjacent to Ipswich River Park and a lot of students, a lot of children use the park for sports and other recreational activities. I think we, there's been talk about an intergenerational community center over there, which might have an impact on programming, you know, either for students or possibly for schools in the, in the future. And so this would just be something that provides that. It also impacts us slightly because the buses park at that location right now. So we would have to find a new location potentially in the future.
And that's, that's regardless of the, of the purchasing of this property, but yeah.
Correct. I mean, it, it, so, right. And so, and then the only, only other thing I would say is, overall, when the town spends money from free cash, there's always a question about whether it could be used for something different than that. And so I think the select board would appreciate our, a recommendation from us. So I'm inclined to, to take a vote and to recommend, and I'm inclined to recommend it, but I don't know if anybody else disagrees or has a different opinion on it.
I'm indifferent.
I, I just.
Go on, Noel.
I wanted to say I agree with you, Scott. I do think that in this case it has bearing on students, children, and I also do think that for the, you know, the purpose of expanding eventually into a recreational opportunity that is important.
Thank, thank, thank you, Noel. And it goes right along with the green space that we're working on this year, right? Rich, any thoughts on?
Yeah, I, I think we should take the vote. I think it's, 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 it's a little bit borderline, but it definitely impacts the students and the, and the children of North Reading and, and ultimately I think it makes sense, so.
Okay. And so, and, and just curious, is everybody planning on being at special town meeting?
I am unsure.
You are unsure?
I will be there.
Okay. And Noel, will you be able to make it?
I don't believe Jeff can.
You don't think Jeff can make it?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that won't help me because I was gonna say we could vote with Jeff later on if everyone's gonna be there, but we will have a quorum to vote the other ones later. So, so if we have four now, we're not sure if we'll have more than three at the meeting. Why don't we take, I will entertain a motion to recommend article one.
I move that the committee vote to recommend article one on the warrant for the special town meeting on Tuesday, January thirtieth.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. So we'll do a roll call vote since we have remote people here. And actually, for the record, Cynthia, we should say we have a remote person. Noel's remote. Rich?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Noel?
Hi.
I'm an eye as well. Passes four to zero. So we will vote to recommend. Moving on, we have the annual report from SEEM Collaborative, and we are honored to have the chair of the SEEM Collaborative with us today. Dr. Daly?
I think as always, I like to just share some of the great work that they're doing over at SEEM. The annual report kind of shows us all the programs that, that they're offering. We currently have, Michael, I believe it's like four students there right now? Is that correct?
Yes.
Would you say four?
Could be growing soon, but.
Did you say four?
Four.
But they have a great many programs and offerings. And as I always mention, well beyond this, we also have many other pieces there for collaboration, job alikes. We have our shared D E I position. I'm just gonna mute. We have our shared D E I position. We have our shared U D L position. And then we also have, you know, several other contractual services with SEEM Collaborative. They do a great job keeping us informed of any changes, updates to their budget, and we've worked with them closely on our Title III grant as well. So we don't currently host any programs here as we did in the past, and they are currently seeking some, some new placement for one of their programs in a building that, in another district that they're no longer able to stay at. But they are very financially sound and offer a lot of great opportunities for, for our students.
Is, is there tuition set by O S D? Where we had the outer district increase last year or is that?
No, that's, these are not private. Yeah. So they are considerably under the cost of obviously a private. And that's really the huge advantage of being a member district is to be able to have these opportunities to us for a fraction of what it would cost at a private institution.
Okay. Let's do the report. Good. Any questions on the annual report? Noel, any questions? I think Dr. Daly knew me and you, but, okay.
Yeah, I have a question. I just kind of threw it back a few minutes ago in my head, and I keep shaking my head and of course you guys are looking at it.
Moving on, Student Opportunity Act overview. Dr. Daly?
Thank you.
Lead us through this.
I will share just briefly. As, as many of you know, there is a Student Opportunity Act, which came out a few years ago. The main goal of Student Opportunity Act is to ensure that every student in the Commonwealth has access to a high quality of public education regardless of the zip code. So as you know, there are two major components. The big work that was done is the changes to the chapter seventy funding formula. A few years ago, this Student Opportunity Act took into account the recommendations of that budget overhaul that took many years to, to come up with. And for us, I think we all know that this really did not amount to a huge amount of difference in chapter seventy. Our number is around seventy thousand. It's about what it was before this. Some districts saw hundreds of thousands and millions of dollars increased. And this is representative of our needs as a community and the fact that we don't have some of the needs that other towns have in terms of poverty. The policy updates, we need to update the plan every three years. So even though there's not a huge amount of difference with the, the funds that we're getting, they still want us to have a plan with goals based around what we're doing in the areas that Student Opportunity Act is hoping to focus upon. So the good news is it's all, you know, aligned to the work we're already doing, the goals that we're already working on, but we are up for a, a new three-year plan to be introduced this year. And so, you know, just a quick overview of the differences. Now, this is not necessarily the district improvement plan in terms of N R P S twenty twenty five, but I'm gonna speak to them in the same way. This is really, there are some districts that have to develop a district improvement plan to submit to the state. But essentially what they're talking about is that the Student Opportunity Plan is a subset of a larger plan for all students that always is focused on English language learners, students with disabilities, and low income students. So our district improvement plan also speaks extensively to those subgroups as well. Again, the, the cycle that we're on, we're just, we're finishing last year, the, the three-year plan, and we are now starting a new three-year plan that's due in April with a spring twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six early updates, and then a new plan in twenty twenty seven. So this is the cycle that we are on at this time. So along with these requirements, they did give us some tools which have been very useful for us, and I'll just show you that quickly here. And it's an interactive tool that we have used with our administrators. And this is data that we've seen before in different formats, but sometimes the way they present it and the way it goes visual, I'm sorry, scroll here, you know, can, can always, you know, you're looking at it through a slightly different lens, and it's always kind of interesting. So just to look at, here's our district heat map. You can compare it to the state. We can look specifically at English learners and things like chronic absenteeism, ninth grade passing rates. We can look at M C A S scores in grades three, six, eight, and ten for English learners, for students with disabilities, for low income students. And, you know, this was one that jumped out at me, like our low income students are, are quite a bit more likely to be absent than, than the all students. You know, and so the questions that this helps us look at is, you know, what are we doing to help students that are in need? And is there anything in our policies or our practices that could be changed in order to address some of these issues that we're looking at? So many of these things are already on our radar, but some of these things may be different for us to look at. And so the first step in this was using a tool like this with our administrative team to think about, you know, what jumps out at us in terms of the data, what was interesting, what surprised us, and how we can use some of this information to develop some questions to try to go deeper into bringing about some positive change. This is where I come in and say, with the zero dollars that we're getting to do those things, right? And so they, they were quick to tell us at the state level that one of the misconceptions is you only need to do this if you're getting increased funding, which I, I understand, we all are doing it. But I think there are some additional grants that you're eligible for after this that come out. I am going to advocate that not getting any dollars in the initial round of the funding should give you some preference in the grant fund, right? So if we want to apply for a grant to work with, you know, I always tried to get, because this was originally supposed to be helping to reduce the kindergarten piece, right? Or actually it was for, it was for pre K. And I remember writing to them saying, well, what if you still have, you don't have universal kindergarten? I think we should get some preferential treatment because we've never received any funding as a result of this formula. That's my argument for them to consider. But this data is helpful. Another big piece of the puzzle is looking at the ways, so this is then, you know, some of the, the plan itself, which we're gonna work on, I'm not going to bring through. This is the data tool that I was showing you. Just wanted to share one more piece of it here, which is just, you know, the parent engagement and engaging stakeholders. So I'm going to be reaching out to the parent groups that I work with. We're gonna have schools talk a little bit with some of their school councils to get some data and some information. I'm going to speak to the C P A C. I know Mr. Buckley, I believe you're the liaison there. So we just want to engage lots of stakeholders into giving us some ideas for things that we can, can continue to do to include in our plan. I may have some kind of survey that's sort of wide reaching as well to get some data and information. So our timeline for this is we submit in April. I'm thinking our March school committee meeting is the one where I would bring it forward here. It does need a, a vote of approval of our plan by the school committee. Any questions?
Who creates the plan from the administration? Is this you or is it Mr. Clean or?
So I would be working on it with my team, yeah. So I, my goal is that, you know, and I said this to the administrative team, we were in this room last week, and I said, you know, I could, Sean and I could sit down and just write this, but I want to really hear from everyone. And so we, we had our, our leadership team, our full team in here with all of our assistant principals and coordinators, and we started to dive into the data. And they came up with some, you know, they're always gonna see something we're not gonna see. So I want to incorporate as much of that into our plan as we can. So he and I will be working on it. I'm sure there'll be pieces that Michael will have to help with as well. And we'll bring that together, and then we will bring it forward to you for, for approval prior to submission.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
I guess my only comment was just what you said sort of before, trying to align it with twenty twenty five, N R P S twenty twenty five, and N R P S twenty thirty, whatever it is, because this would obviously go into the next plan year, so.
Exactly. Absolutely. Thank you.
Look forward to seeing the update in March. And that leads perfectly into N R P S twenty twenty five update.
Great, thank you. Just have a few updates for you. Are we sharing at home? Let me make sure I'm sharing. So just as you know, this is just a mid-year check-in. This is our one-page interactive N R P S twenty twenty five. What I'm going to do is just click on a few of these elements just to show you some of the areas and some of the things I can update you on. Under Student Services, one point four. For this year, we're talking about fully implementing our disabilities awareness program. I think Ms. Conan gave an update on what we're doing with that program. We're also gonna have a parent piece of that as well that we've talked about. And developing student voice and encouraging students to participate in their own learning. One thing that we've done, and Sophie spoke to it a little bit, this update of the power block at the high school. This is a goal that's connected to the administrator goals, school improvement goal, and they also have student members on that. They call it the repo team that is meeting. And I'm gonna check in with them and see how that's going on Thursday, but there, I got some feedback from the group that met today of the students for our school council. And as she said, I think they're all seeing this change as a positive one that they're piloting. Similarly, though, you know, I think we had some opportunities with the student IDs to get more input from students earlier. And so I know there's an article coming out in the Student Literate Magazine about communication and more ideas. So it's like, in some ways, we're doing everything right and getting kids involved from the outset. In other ways, communication, you know, so it's, it's always a good opportunity for us to look back and say, you know, one of our major goals here is student voice. How are we getting that information from our students and to our students? So it's a, it's a continuous cycle as well. And as I mentioned just a moment ago with the Student Opportunity Act, there are great opportunities to get some student voice there as well. Under M T S S, we are looking at the school schedules at the middle school and the high school. As I mentioned, looking at power block for what's changing with that and how that can be thought of in terms of interventions, as well as the middle school intervention block. And it also talks about having an S E L screener, which we are talking about rolling out at the elementary schools. So you heard it during the high school presentation, what they're doing with information at the high school level. And the, and the middle school and elementary schools are also going to do this as well. It's going to be something sent home to families. They will have the option to review the questions. They could opt out of whatever programs that we're doing, but we are taking those steps with that universal screener as well. Under cybersecurity, there have been some policy revisions. I met with Noel and Jeff last week. There are many policies we're gonna be looking at, but several of the policies that we'll be bringing forward to the next meeting are concerned around data, data privacy. Some of the things Dr. Downs spoke to when he updated us and some other pieces as well. And there are, you know, Dr. Downs also spoke about the parental updates and information about what's happening with student data. Under student health, we are working towards the one point oh adjustment council at every school, but as you know, we were able to add in a position at the little school so that we have a point four at the little as well as the existing one point oh that was split between the buildings. It's sort of amounted to like a point seven at two buildings this year. But as we've discussed many times, those are asset funded positions. We need to fight for those positions moving forward. We also have added a lead counselor this year. So similar to our lead nurse position, we have that lead counselor position, and Mr. Jovina, who presented through the high school, is in that role. And so she's working with Michael Rosa, Cynthia Conant, and our principals to develop those processes for the screeners at the elementary schools, which is great. And also under that is the cell phones grant, so there will be more. We have to submit our first progress report on that coming up. The power block group, a lot of what they're talking about there is cellphone usage, not usage. So there's a piece of it there that I've picked up on. And then we're also doing our own investigation, and I believe Noel wanted to be involved in that group as well. And so there'll be some more coming out on that very soon. Under diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, we have sort of standards one, one and one point two talk about the walkthroughs process. We've been doing walkthroughs. Everyone has had a goal to have something on the books through January. There's a few that still have them scheduled out, but I know that middle school, high school, and the little school have been, are already ready to go with high school and middle. I think little school had a, a cancellation due to illness, but the, the other schools have started their process of doing the walkthroughs with the administrators to understand better what it is we're looking for when we get into a classroom, and we want to see cultural responsiveness. And then the next part of this is helping our teachers understand what we're looking for, and then they're modeling it, and we're giving them feedback. So it's a two-way conversation. I mentioned last time that we applied again for the diversification grant to hopefully continue our work with the diversity of our workforce hiring practices. I'll let you know if we receive that. The climate and culture, the restorative practices, work that we're doing at all of our schools, but it's, it's really been taking on a, a lead at the middle school. They're really working into everything they do with staff and students. And the high school is exploring that in depth this year as a part of the goals of their school improvement plan and administrative goals. Under teaching and learning, I'm just highlighting one point three, digital learning and technology integration. Dr. Downs is leading some work here on artificial intelligence and virtual reality, and he's been developing his goals about what this could look like for our district plan, but then he's also offering some professional development for staff members. And I believe his article that's going to be in the transcript this week talks in great detail about what some of those offerings are. They're very interesting, and I believe he is going to be, I'm not sure if he's recording the sessions, but he's definitely, a lot of the materials that he's generating, he's going to be publicizing so people can, can see it. And it's really, really interesting things that are, that are cutting edge. And he's involved in some of the state groups and state committees that are looking at digital equity, but also A I and V R and trying to stay on that. So he's synthesizing a lot of the information for us and sharing it out, which is great. Just a quick technology infrastructure update, two point three. We've updated the wireless infrastructure at this building, the middle school and the high school. And we did that work over the summer so that we have our new A Ps in the buildings that are state of the art. And we have interactive whiteboards all at the elementary schools, and we're starting to pilot some of the boards that are gonna be used in the middle school. And they are just absolutely thrilled so far with, with the technology. I was in the art room at the middle school, and she loves how interactive it is, but just the quality of the picture. When you're looking at artwork, just the, the, I don't know if it's four K, but it's just the high definition of the artwork is just, you know, so much better than the projection systems that we had and just the technologies come so far in the last ten years. So people are excited about that promise. The, the whiteboards is part of our capital improvement plan for the future, but we're testing out which boards we want in a few different spaces, and people are very happy with those results. And the elementary teachers are, are very happy as well. And then under two point four with course offerings, again, we had talked about, I'll just show you this one again, just to show you what it looks like, but talking about increasing some of our, our courses here, but identifying additional courses in arts. And so, you know, I was very happy when Mr. LaPret was able to present on that Ceramics Two course, something that had been talked about for quite some time, and obviously building upon that advanced art class that was a, a goal from last year. So that's just a brief overview of some of the highlights of sort of the work we've done. I think there's other areas where we've got work to do and something may not have started yet that needs to get started. It's always good for us to check in on these goals periodically so that it's not something we open up in June and say, whoops, we never did this, right? So it's, it's, it's something that I do routinely with my team when we meet at the schools, when we review their, you know, every time I meet with them, we look at their school improvement plan, their goals, which are all related here. And, you know, really the way these are being achieved is through those goals. There's not, some of this is things that I'm doing myself, but most of it is through the action steps that they're taking and the work that we're doing as a district. So I'm not sure if there's any questions, but this is just an overview.
Not really. I mean, it, it's great to see a lot of work. Oh, I know what, the power block pilot. Can you just either remind me or tell us, I can't remember if we talked about before, that, what, what they're actually looking at and changing or thinking about changing?
Sure. So as written as, as the school improvement goal, you know, we're trying to figure out to, the, the way, the way I've discussed it with Mr. LaPret is, you know, a lot of schools, when they try to figure out how to address issues like helping all students, right, or students with disabilities, English learners, high needs, low income, kids who are having trouble in school, a lot of the, you know, they'll do an audit and a study and whatever, and they come up with, we need some kind of power block, right? So we already have it. So the question is, are we using it to its full potential? Are we doing everything that it was intended to be? Is it doing, has it changed over time, right? Some of our staff that have been here for twenty years can talk about how it's changed over time and what it could look like, what could be done differently. So it was a good opportunity for us to go in and look at what time on learning means. You know, it shouldn't be a glorified study period, although we do think kids need breaks in the day too, and we do, we do agree that kids need time to, to, you know, have a different lens and to decompress, but certain things count for time on learning and certain things don't. So making sure that it's done efficiently. I think power block, from my observation, I see a lot of your higher, higher classes, your A Ps sending passes to kids to come down to do some extra help. Are we doing that with all of our classes in the same way, right? Are we taking advantage of that time? And what is the process? What is the system? You know, and what is the accountability? Because our kids are great, but when given the choice, sometimes are they gonna take that initiative? Because our kids are great, but when given the choice, sometimes are they going to take that initiative or does sometimes does the the system need to help drive the process, right? So I think that's what you heard Sophie saying is like that accountability piece. Where kids are, and it's obviously for safety as well. She spoke to the safety piece of it.
Right.
For making sure everyone's where they need to be and what that looks like. And as we look at our safety protocols and processes, making sure it's a tight system, loose but tight, right, where we want kids to have flexibility, but yet we want them to be accountable. So that's really what that, and so it's driven by a volunteered group of teachers that are looking at this, and then also some students that are involved in the administration. So I'm excited about it. I would love to see more in terms of the possibility of interventions, like if we've identified kids that need X, how they can make sure they get there, even beyond just a teacher calling them down for extra help or to make up an assignment or an assessment. But that's sort of down the road. And so I see this in multiple phases over time, but it's great that we're having the conversation.
Do you think students look at Power Block as a as a lighter period, like a relaxing period or?
I think for some, I think it's different for different students and what it's for. And again, we value that, but there's also some ambiguity about sometimes does a club run or sometimes is it time to go to the library and who can get to the library and how many kids can go there and, you know, what can happen during that time? We do have one, maybe sometimes more classes that run during that period and the question of what does that look like? And is, you know, I think band running during that time makes it possible to do a lot of what we do with the band.
Right.
But if that had to be after school, you'd lose a certain amount of flexibility. But on the other hand, you know, we can't really be running a lot of classes during that period. So there's lots of different things that we've been looking at from that group. So I kind of meet regularly with Mr. LaPret to review the updates on it. But I am excited to this week, check in with the group and just hear from them directly on what's coming. But they they rolled out this pilot along with the the new quarter starting and all that. And so, you know, everyone's sort of a buzz right now. It's a good thing, though. I think everyone, I think everyone wants to see something a little bit different. You know, we can always improve, so.
I think, I think depending on the students, I think services could be provided during that time as well.
Yes.
Students get pulled out of services, things like that, so they're not being pulled out of general education classes as well.
They're very popular in that way. And that was one of the conversations we had last year about, you know, what makes a class, what makes a block, what makes, but it it's advantageous to do it during that period. And it's also when they have lunch, right? So opposite your Power Block is when you're when you're in lunch. And so even when I meet with the students to prepare for tonight, that's during Power Block, you know, so. But there's great opportunities for a lot of different things, and I think, you know, we can continue to build that to its full potential.
I have a question. This is just basic. Is is Power Block able to be used by kids as just like a old fashioned study hall?
It technically really shouldn't be just that way, at least not the, you know, for the, we do count those minutes as time on learning. And so you can be engaged in directed study and some independent study. But the old fashioned study hall concept should not be the norm because of, you know, what what its purpose is. But I think.
It's supposed to be like learning hours. I'm just wondering like if there, is that something that exists or ever had the opportunity to exist or is that, are those days gone by? In terms of kids that have, I mean, tends to after school sports and things like that and being able to have like supportive study hall. I just wonder if that's a thing anymore.
Yeah, I think it's different than, I think the the goals of that, what you're thinking of, I think we can successfully do during a revised Power Block program. And I think it's happening now and it has been happening, and we can continue to have that. I think the study hall maybe that I had in school, in a lot of times where you might be doing homework, but you might just be sitting around talking, and that's not quite the same. So I think the goals of what you're speaking to, I think can still be a goal, but it needs to be focused and directed in order to count those minutes. Yep?
I mean, I I I know that with, I mean, last year, there were some students that wanted to talk to myself and Dr. Daly about their civil action projects, and that was a time that they said, well, if you come in during Power Block, we can meet. And so those students were able to kind of set a meeting and bring, you know, I came in and sat down with them a couple of different times, so. I think there's a lot of different purposes, and I think, I appreciate what you say, where like if you, if you have too many things going on, it then you're going to have kids that are conflicted in there.
Right.
You want to have enough things that you catch most students that they're not just sitting in the library or media center, whatever we call it now.
Yeah. And so we've we've talked even about like, is it, you know, how many days per cycle is it? Can you, should you be doing X, Y, or Z, right? So that we're, and we do have minutes to play with too. Mr. LaPret kind of led the the mathematics on it of just how many minutes we have, how many minutes we need to have for time on learning. And so there is some breathing downtime as well, as long as someone's not choosing all of that at the buffet, right? So you have to, and so that's sort of what we're looking. Because we we know how important that is and the dividends that pays as well, so.
Does time, does time on learning, broad questions, time on learning have any exceptions or any specific application to different students? Because like if kids are getting pulled out, I mean, is time on learning just what is offered? Even if it's.
Yeah. And we're not, we're not, we're not reporting it on individuals, but it's more, you know, when we do our reports and we look at, you can't count passing time, you can't count lunch or recess, right? But we know those things are all very important, so you've got to have them in there. But then you, for the most of the time, it's that, it's a focused part of the day.
Okay. Well, whenever people come in, I try to have a few questions, but since it's you, I think you'd probably be be okay with not many. I'll just say I appreciate the update and the work that's gone into 2025.
Thank you.
No other questions. We will move on to routine matters. We have an open session from December 11th, and I believe Diana was missing on this one.
That's all right. I move to approve the open session minutes of the school committee meeting dated December 11th, 2023, as written.
I'll second it.
We have a motion. We have a second. Diana?
Abstain.
She abstains. Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes three to zero. And then we have January 8th, which Rich missed, but he listened to the whole thing, so.
After the fact, but yeah.
Yes. So you can approve or not approve, up to you. Diana, a motion?
I move to approve the open session minutes for the school committee meeting on January 8th, 2024, as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion with a second. Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Oh, wait, before I approve this, I I mentioned the note, the only addition was Jeff Simon's name was actually G E O F S I M O N S, so.
Men as a, as.
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
Yes. So the motion is as amended. We'll just rebook. Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes four zero. Thank you very much. I have a big note that says it, and I can't even remember writing. Budget update. Mr. Connolly?
Yes, thank you. So there's no operating budget update this meeting. I think we went over that last, at the last meeting. I did have two other updates that are in consistent with our policy around recognition of booster and support groups. So there's two organizations that have come forward and submitted the application for recognition. They have completed all of the proper paperwork in terms of setting up and creating bylaws and setting up offices and applying for a public charity number with the Attorney General's Office. They have their own separate bank account, and they have established a mission and a purpose that I think is consistent with what we would like to see and collaborate with. And the first organization is the North Reading High School Girls Lacrosse Boosters. So they've they've submitted the paperwork, which was also included in the in the document packet. I did reference what their their mission is, and essentially, I think they're looking to to collaborate and work with the North Reading School District, the North Reading High School, to just better the girls lacrosse program, provide additional opportunities to student athletes in the terms of financial assistance that the the school budget can't can't support. And they just want to have all of the North Reading High School student athletes be able to access the facilities, the equipment and training and programs that's available and just kind of enhance enhance what's already been provided. So I certainly thought it was a good mission in line with what we've done in the past. So I appreciate their their work kind of following this process, certainly in adherence with our school committee policy. So the the second request is the North Reading High School Girls Soccer Club, and they've they've followed, I think they've kind of followed a very similar process, filled out the very similar paperwork, created similar bylaws, a similar mission, and done all the the same, the same areas that are required of them. So I don't know if you want to take kind of both separately or if there's any particular questions. There's a couple of memorandums in the packet with recommended motions, but I do appreciate the work on some of these parents. I did kind of help them, point them in the right direction. Some of these parents had reached out to me in the fall, and I, from what I saw, they did a really good job kind of researching the paperwork, completing it, submitting it. So I just really appreciate their effort and their adherence to the policy.
I appreciate their effort. I appreciate your effort. I just have two requests or questions. First one is, do you have a list somewhere? And if you do, can you provide us like a list of all the approved boosters?
Yeah, so I post them on the website. So do you want to go to our website?
Sure. I'm just curious. And then the the follow-up question on this is, I believe there's a soccer booster club.
So as, as you guys approve them, I I post them on the website.
But are they, the soccer and the lacrosse, were they gender specific before? Were they, were they, was it a boy soccer one before?
Booster thing under there. Was that?
Was it a boy soccer one before or just a general soccer? And now is it?
There was a boys, it was a boy soccer.
It was specific to boys and same with lacrosse? Okay. That's just what I was looking.
So these, so the two pending are the ones I don't.
How quickly he got that for you?
Hey, look at that.
The two pending are the ones pending tonight.
Okay, perfect.
But we just recently did baseball. We recently did the boys soccer. Recently, we did cheerleading about a year ago.
We have a hockey booster club even though it's a combined team?
For the girls?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. I just wasn't sure if they, if there was just a general soccer one before and then it was, it was a boy soccer and it was a girl soccer.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had. Any other questions?
No.
Make some motions?
I think it's a good, a good policy we have in place and.
Yeah, I think we should do them separate.
Yeah, I can read it if that's all right. I recommend, I move that the committee vote, that in adherence to the school committee policy, LEC, that the committee vote to recognize the North Reading Girls, sorry, I'm not scrolling here for some reason. North Reading Girls, High School Girls Lacrosse Boosters program, I'm sorry. My computer is like not letting me scroll in any coherent way. As a support group and authorize school administration to work collaboratively collaboratively with, for the betterment of the North Reading Public Schools.
Sorry, that's a handful of motions.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, passes four zero.
And I move that in adherence to school committee policy, LEC, the North Reading School Committee vote to recognize the North Reading Girls Soccer Boosters Club as a support group and authorize school administration to work collaboratively with, for the betterment of the North Reading Public Schools.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Noel? I'm an aye as well, passes four zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Connolly, before we move on, just real quick on the budget for this year. You, you showed me the other day when we were just meeting. Are you gonna, are you planning to share that out with the committee soon? And when are we going to get budget books?
So we're moving on the the similar timeline. So we would, the budget books are due to be released the Friday before February break. So I think that's like February 15th, 16th timeframe. And then the presentation is the first week in March.
And for the summary, I'm just thinking, because we're probably going to be presenting something at the next finance planning team meeting, which is February 5th or 6th. So it'd be nice if we could kind of distribute that to everybody, just to be on the same page and get any thoughts before.
I can do that, yeah.
Just the one, just the one page, the two pages or whatever, just to kind of.
Sort of like a, just an email like this is.
Yeah, I'd just say like this is what we're working on or whatever, just so that everybody can see it. And and we're also in the middle of negotiating contracts and everything else. I just think it would be relevant for everybody to have the same information.
Yeah.
At the same time, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do that.
If you don't mind that. Okay.
The only other thing I just want to update the committee on, on the budget, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want everyone to know that we are, I don't think I made it clear. We are up to bid this year for the food service contract. So it's an every five year process for us, so it came, it came pretty quickly. So we are, I'm in the process, and the DSE over the last couple of years has really kind of taken that control over that process. They've now, there's now a set state approved template that we have to use, RFP approved template. So when the previously districts had kind of created their own language, their own RFP and gone out, the state had done a lot of procurement audits of districts in this process. And one of the things that came out of them was just, there was, there was a lot of required language that's required to go in these contracts. So they just, they've now have sort of a set template that districts need to use. There's some flexibility that we obviously have in terms of the the evaluating criteria that we want to kind of weigh the RFPs before we get to pricing and so forth. So I'm, I'm in that, they posted the RFP template. They were a little bit behind in doing that. Last week, we have until February 1st to get it approved. So I'm working on that. So I I expect that that will be released, advertised in the paper and released on the website and advertised appropriately around the beginning of February, maybe a little bit after that. And we'd be opening those bids like the beginning of March. And we would have a committee involved in reviewing those, but I just, I want that is going on as well. Just wondering, when are we aware?
Two questions. I mean, number one, do you remember, how many bids did we get last time?
We've consistently gotten three bids, along with the, obviously, the incumbent Chartwells has bid. We've gotten two other vendors. It's changed a little bit who it's been, but we've, we've gotten three bids each time.
And and if you, in terms of the timeline, if you need a school committee rep or whatever on there?
So we don't need that. In the past, we've done it, but we, it's recommended that you have three or four, four folks on the committee. So typically, it's myself, sometimes a staff member, sometimes a, it could be a school committee member if someone should choose to want that. It's been, I usually get a building principal to do it that's close to it.
Whatever you need.
Kind of how we've done it.
Whatever you need. If you'd like somebody, we'd be happy to be part of it. If you.
If not, we trust you completely, so.
Okay.
It might be something I actually have some expertise in.
Yeah?
Food.
And then, and then actually the bus, I mean, well, we have to, for the, like, we had met the other day.
Yeah, we should formally vote that.
We should vote that. Should we put that on just to vote for, because Diane and I met when we get into the updates or whatever, we met, because one of our goals for this year was to look at the bus contract. And I think we were in agreement that, looking at some of the neighboring districts, it made sense to just take the option year that's available to us. And so I think we are going to bring that to the committee at some point.
Okay.
I just don't know when you have to elect that, but I want to make sure that.
Yeah, it was a March 1 deadline of notifying the vendor, so we should do that in an upcoming meeting, February.
Just in case, because never know if there's going to be snow that cancels a meeting, so.
Right.
Probably good to get that on soon. Okay. Staffing?
None at this time.
Bids and donations?
None at this time.
Grants?
None at this time.
Overnight, overnight trip requests?
None at this time.
Subcommittee updates, CIPC map. Jeff finally made it on the agenda and has been here to give enough, so. Actually, you were going to talk, Michael, do you want to, is there anything that came from the CIPC you want to?
Yeah, we had a good meeting. I think we're at the stage where we've got, we've heard from all the departments, so we kind of finalized the presentations from the major departments and made their presentations. On this particular meeting on January 10th, we reviewed the the list of our requests for all the departments. There were some modifications to some of the amounts based on new information that came forward. So we reviewed those, make sure, we made sure the list was completely up to date. For example, a couple of hours had changed from the presentation. So we are now asking for phase one of the hood school roof would be a $200,000 request. And then we had revised based on updated quotes of the instructional technology smart boards at the middle school and the high school from 150 to 200,000.
Is it 200 an increase of what we were requesting before?
We requested 150, so now we're at 200. So it's a 50.
So it's a $50,000 increase for that request and then it's, we actually requested 400 for the roof.
And the amendment that's going to be voted on at special town meeting to change the capital budget, that was last year's and if that's approved, is that money that's already there and so?
Yeah.
It won't impact, assuming it passes a special town meeting, it won't impact?
Correct.
Anything? If it doesn't pass, could it impact this year's or is that still money they've kind of set aside already?
That's money they've set aside. Yeah, it shouldn't have an impact.
Won't have an impact on it, okay.
Good question. We did, we did talk about those requests actually as a committee for the upcoming, upcoming town meeting. And at, at this stage, all the committee members have the ranking sheets with the revised amounts. And we have until February first to submit those to the, the chair, Mr. Kelleher. And then on February sixth, we'll meet and we'll review and we'll see where the ranking is at.
Has there been any discussion this year about changing the ranking system and how it works or not?
Not a lot, no. No, there hasn't been.
Oh, I won't go further than that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, finance planning team met on January twelfth. Mr. McGowan and I were both there with Mr. Conley and Dr. Daly. Rich, you want to give an update?
Yeah, so we had a spirited discussion about various topics. Talked about the special town meeting and as always, you know, who do we think will come? How many people do you think we can get? But everyone is, I think, well, I shouldn't characterize everyone's opinion. But, you know, I think that, that was the first topic. Talked briefly about wastewater update, I don't think there was anything substantive there. And then got into this year's revenue and next year's revenue expense plan. And that news continues to be pretty, it's certainly not getting better, that's for sure. So we're to continue to look at what will be a challenging environment for the, for this upcoming budget season. Talked about what we've talked about before, about doing, you know, requesting an override to help fund the budget, especially the most important needs over the next five years. The town did come with a list of priority items that, similar to our list that we've talked about, which is great that they did that work. It's a very, it's a preliminary list, but there's a lot of good things on there, including, similar to what we did, you know, the idea of possibly looking at a couple of fees to reduce as we, you know, raise taxes on, if, if we end up raising taxes on the, for, for the taxpayers. So, you know, I think that process moving forward, we push to get another meeting in the beginning of this next month so that we don't let this process die. Understandably want to get past this special town meeting. But yeah, so we're meeting again early February and we'll see where we go.
Good update. Rich was very fired up in this meeting, so it was nice to see. Athletics Subcommittee, since I'm not on it, I guess I won't give that update.
It's about well.
We're the Fine Arts.
I, I have the agenda in front of me, I have to say, like, it was super difficult to hear in that meeting, so I feel like I caught some of it, but not a lot of it.
Same.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I, I know they gave a winter sports update and what I heard was that like the teams were pretty steady state from the past, but there was one team in particular that might have been low and I couldn't hear exactly which one that was. I don't remember.
We fixed our technology now, there was.
Yeah.
The room was disassembled and now it's packed together, so.
Are you usually in person or are you always virtual on these?
Lately I've had to be virtual, but.
But are some people in person?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the two, you two were remote and so the people in the room were, I didn't have an owl set up, so it just was picking up my computer, so. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's okay.
You could feel, I, I could have got up and set it up, it would have just taken a few minutes, so. Next time it'll be ready.
And I know there were some letters that went out about the postseason stipend. I didn't hear more beyond that, but I know that there was some communication and some decisions made.
There was no issues, we're continuing to talk about that. It's just a, you know, a process that needs a little bit of attention moving forward. It's gonna, you know, we can address it with the union through negotiations and through discussions, so.
And other than that, I know there was a discussion around that $50,000 grant that would be mainly allocated, pretty much allocated to baseball.
Right.
But I don't know, I didn't hear the details on, I don't think you have 100% determined the usage of it.
No, we're still in sort of a research phase, but we, there is a $50,000 gift that came in particularly kind of geared towards the baseball program. I think we accepted that a while back. So there is, and I know Mr. Johnson with Coach Ashmobal has been in communication. They're, they're just trying to find the right, the right fit for that. Some of the initial proposals, the next, what we really want to do is create some nice seating now to kind of complete that, that area and that project, because with the netting, the safety netting looks great. We want to upgrade the, the bleacher kind of viewing area. The initial proposals are just a lot higher than that $50,000, so now we're just, we're just trying to find the right solution to, to work within the budget and the funds that are there, so. I think they recognize it's probably not going to happen for this spring, but they're, they're still working with some vendors on that.
Is that anything that could be done with vocational schools? Like bleachers or anything like that?
It's, that's a little bit, especially the, talking about big concrete pads.
Yeah. The idea is to pour some concrete pads and just have a better, whether it be a wraparound bleaching kind of behind the backstop now that you can kind of safely sit behind there. It's kind of the initial sort of wish list was just something that looked awesome and kind of wrapped around, but it was just a hundred, you know, three times.
Even if just install some of the stuff, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe.
I don't know.
There was some discussion around just the entrance area to, where you come over there, buy the, where tickets are collected coming into the football. That, I was thinking could be a potential vocation, you know, just to help us think it through and what could be done with some shrubs or some temporary fencing, so there's some possibilities there. And then we also discussed a partial lighting of the outfield, not for baseball, but for the use of soccer or football practice field area. So we got an updated quote for that area that we talked about.
Yeah, so that, that's an interesting project, it will, it would ultimately be a capital project if we decide to go forward. But the idea being that, for now, can we get some, enough lighting in there to so it could serve as a practice field? Because obviously in the fall it gets dark, pretty quickly it gets dark late enough that, or early enough that it becomes difficult to have practices there. We know in town there's just a general need for the, more fields. So maybe a couple of light poles, light installations would be enough to, just for practices. But also sort of plan ahead to potentially have it, you know, another two poles or whatever is required to make it more useful for actually games, but that's, it's all preliminary at this point.
On athletics, real quick, with the new turf, any issues in the fall with the new turf or?
It was great, there was a couple of spots that needed repair, was instantly under warranty, everything fixed up and looks great. We're going to send out some reminders about, really you shouldn't be shoveling the field, you shouldn't, you know, there's some pieces like that that we're going to make sure communicated out. But everyone's very happy so far with the project.
Been years since it started, but like with tennis courts, I mean, are they still getting used at night with lighting and everything?
Right now?
Tennis courts, I mean, and up until?
They go up until around Thanksgiving, and then the nets come down. And then they'll be right back.
Oh, the nets go down, okay.
Yeah, we take the nets in around, around that time. But we, we have programs that go right up, I mean, we have people out there.
I remember being, coming outside and.
Yeah, we had good weather too this year, right up until then, so not right now, though.
I would say the lighting system works for the community. They can kind of turn it on and then it sort of flashes when it's about to go off, it's a ton of timing system.
Yeah, that's, that's a good setup. And I could go into the golf cart discussion, but, you know, we'll leave that.
Was it written, and I just, maybe I'm hallucinating, but like, wasn't there a fire? Was there a fire in like the bathroom or down there before and was that all fixed?
That's all been fixed under the insurance claim. There was a, there was a fire about a year ago.
It was a year ago? I just, I never, never found an update, like everything was all repaired and everything is all good, okay?
Yep.
Fine Arts Subcommittee?
It's again Mr. McGowan and Ms. Redloff, I apologize, I will fix that.
Not well, Buckley sounds very similar.
Yeah, if you've got notes, go ahead.
Let's see, there was, the big news was the update that.
We were finally able to get the updated, or the correct designs for planning the improvement, the sound improvement for the, for the pack that we've been waiting for. What I understood from the conversation is that the, now that's been shared on with the North Reading Building Inspector, so we're waiting for his approval to be able to move ahead with the next steps on sound. Is that correct, Dr. Daly? Does that sound right?
That is my understanding.
That is my understanding, so a great, great development there, I appreciate.
Brad Door from Doran Whittier, who took some time to dig deep, find some of the drawings we needed. And when I met with Ms. Kane, she and Mr. Campania have been working and said they're finally seeing some things that they haven't been able to find to get some of the specs for the percenterium that they needed. So now the next steps are working together with the building inspector to get everything in place so we can hang those speakers.
Any idea on timeframe or for the spring show or not?
Oh, that's our goal, yeah, ASAP, so we are, we are working on that.
I appreciate everyone's continuing, that's, it's the kind of thing you just need to keep pushing to get it done, so I.
Yeah, they were great and, and Mr. Redloff also helped us as well, which is great.
Noel, you could, you can provide the proper credit if you need to, so.
Thanks all around for that. There's still a few things that we need, we still have some questions around the projection screen and some additional things that we need, but we're taking everything we can and, and kind of very excitedly moving forward with that, so.
Also, the update on the arts grant, that work that is, and Ms. Lister is the contact for that. And the, I don't know, what is the name of the grant? I don't have that in my.
Yeah, it's the Arts Cultural Vitality Index Grant. So similar to what we did last year, we're going to continue forward with another round of doing a self-study on how we are incorporating the new frameworks into the district and also through sort of an equity lens, making sure all students have access to, to arts and different, what kind of arts offerings are available to all students.
And then, let's see, some more updates, just upcoming, the tiny art show is going to be taking place at the library again. And, it's a high school art display is upcoming. Let's see, also, Mrs. Kane had hired an intern to help her with her public relations. I don't know if hire is the right word because she was an intern. But, and, to help the college, the higher students social media public relations are. You know, because there's so much, so much to share on what's going on, you know, with all the different programs.
Yeah, I thought that was the, one of the coolest parts of the things we learned. Dr. Daly, that was part, that's, is, is that a school, I know there's internship is, is a class, right? Is that that?
I believe, yeah, I believe that it's the, the cooperative learning experience, we usually outplay students.
Right.
But there wasn't something in this area and so we did it sort of internal. We've done that a few times for different placements, so he's learning how to basically run our programs.
Yeah, so sort of, sort of learning about being a manager of the facility, right? Of someone who can, who can run the various parts of the facility, whether it be the sound or the, or the lighting for groups that might come in, that kind of thing.
And then also the PR side, as, as you mentioned.
Yep, and the PR side.
And, and fine arts, real, two quick things. Number one, just when you were thinking that, it was kind of interesting, I just know from the middle school musical, there's a student who was performing in a Christmas carol at North Shore Music Theater. So he wasn't able to do the middle school production, but he's an assistant producer, so. Or assistant director, as I know, I appreciate Ms. Lister gave, you know, wanted to keep him involved in it, but I don't think he can make all the practice time, but so he is an assistant director to still be involved. And then the only question was, the middle school concert was so well-attended. I know they had to shift and move students out of the seats and everything. Was that ever discussed at the Fine Arts Subcommittee? I'm just wondering if that's like the new norm, because again, the, the great thing about it right now is there's so much participation that there's so many more parents there. Where, you know, Mr. Guberto and I were literally in the back, standing up in the back together. And I, I, I don't know if like it's sustainable long-term in that same facility with that many students or?
We debriefed a little bit, I, I believe once we moved the students out, everyone had a seat.
Yes, I think so.
At the beginning of that, you had sort of all of the performers sitting in the audience and then we very quickly realized that wasn't going to, so I came down, but they were already on their way to sort of move people. But that was quite a, quite a night, two hour concert.
I was just wondering, like, if, if enrollment, if the number of participants continues to rise and, and we keep more students from fifth to sixth and keep more, more than that, like from sixth to seventh and seventh to eighth, it might be something where we have to think about like having tickets that there's already assigned seating or?
We've had to do the, the assigned tickets or minimum, you know, for different events. I, that's always, like, we had to do that with all town for different things. It's great to be able to bring a grandparent or aunt and uncle to, you know, siblings. So, yeah, I think really it's hard, but having to rotate those kids out so that, you know, and that's what we shifted to, but we'll try to be proactive with that now that we've seen those numbers. And you keep adding a cappella group and, you know, there's, there's four different bands now and so, but it was quite a show.
I mean, at some point you max out on the number.
Yeah.
At some point you max out on the number of kids involved, because there's only so many kids. Hopefully, hopefully that levels out so that everybody fits.
Or you could do is you could, I mean, if you needed to, you could split it up, do like sixth grade separate from seventh and eighth or something, like if you needed to it. But again, I think it was fine this year, I just wondered if it was discussed afterwards at all, so.
Yeah, we always debrief with Ms. Lister.
Noel, were you saying something? Noel, did you have something else?
Do we have anything else? Sort of, I mean, just quickly, that the upcoming, we have the North Shore Music Ball and the, and North Shore is competing in the second week of February. Also, there's been an issue with the payment, the payment link for activities, that's unresolved. And our next meeting is in March.
Okay, thank you very much, Noel.
Thanks, Noel.
Evaluation Subcommittee?
She's got a few.
You want to, want to keep going on that, Noel?
I will, I'll do my best, because I can't find my notes, so.
I don't take notes, so just evaluate.
Evaluation, we, we kind of bounce the idea back and forth. Should we be waiting on, when should we do our own evaluation? Should we wait until the end of the sort of school year, should we wait until June? Or should we do it before the elections upcoming? And we do have strong feelings, we feel in a way or another, we thought it would be, I actually was kind of going back and forth myself, so we thought we'd ask the group if there was a feeling of when we should do our own evaluation. Should we do that with maybe potentially, or actually one group member? Or should we do that before we bid farewell?
It's a great question.
Thoughts on it?
We did, I'll just say we discussed, you know, putting it on the agenda at least to get an update. And then the question of like, what are they going to send out? Is it going to be the forms with the written feedback or is it more of a discussion, so?
Well, I think, I guess my thought would be, we have, when we do the evaluation, we have two different pieces in there. We have whether the goals were accomplished and then we have the overall rating. So potentially we could split those two up and do the rating of us like as a committee, separate from the goals updates, because I think a lot of the goals updates go through the end of the year and you might need the time for that. But the rating of like how we're doing as a committee, like I don't think that's as specific to the goals projects. And so I would think maybe you could do it that way, where you just do kind of like how the committee's functioning as a group as a separate thing and then?
And do that one in April.
Yeah, do that one before the election and then do, you know, and kind of finalize at the end of the school year, you know, even in the early summer, kind of wrap up the goals update and?
I think that makes sense, yeah. I, I think, I think doing something before the election makes sense. And, and you're right that those two things are really not the same and, 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 yeah, the rating thing is probably the one to do. There's our thoughts, Noel.
That's very helpful.
And then Policy Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee as well? Did we lose you, Noel?
We can't hear you, Noel. We can't hear you, Noel.
I keep taking my phone off because I'm talking, I'm sorry. This is the one I can't find my notes on, so, Dr. Daley, maybe?
Sure.
But, you, you covered, we mentioned a lot, and I think there wasn't, there wasn't anything very revolutionary that we talked about. There were no big sticking points, but do you have the, just to start out?
Sure, no, I can share, I, I mentioned this a little bit earlier, we're going to be, next meeting we'll do a first reading of about, there's about 10 or so, so we might break them up depending on the agendas and what they look like. There's a few related to food service, the rest of them are all related around digital learning and policy, privacy, how we're using our tools. And then after that, there's a series that we're gonna be looking at that are fiscal-related, some that we've had for some time that we haven't got to, it was sort of a backlog. So we're, we've got some work ahead for the Policy Subcommittee, but those are the, those will be upcoming. They're, they're related, so we might package them together and, and go through them. I don't think there's gonna be a ton of deliberation, unlike our, you know, animals policy that I think we deliberated one policy for eight meetings, so hopefully these will go pretty quickly, but it was, uh... So we have several meetings scheduled to keep, to keep ahead of this group. We always go through when we get the updates from the MASC group. The Subcommittee reviews sort of the recommendations, and we compare it against our current policies and what we have. And this is a time when some of these policies, we, we didn't even have one in place, and we felt that we probably should, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Subcommittee schedule, Finance Planning Team is meeting February fifth at 8:15 a.m. Just to note, we are in person on that one again, we've kinda been pushing to get them in person, think it's, you know, more progress can be made. Athletic Subcommittee meeting March fifth at noon, Fine Arts Subcommittee meeting the same day at 3:15. And those are, those are March, yes, not to March?
Yep.
Okay. Policy Subcommittee, February 20th and March 12th, both at 1 p.m. Evaluation Subcommittee, the same days, at 1:30 p.m. A half-hour meeting, wouldn't that be nice, I'm kidding. Uh, CIPC scheduled to meet February sixth at 8:15. Administrative Report, Dr. Daley.
So I'll just share quickly as, just a few updates. I've, I've shared about our Project 351, which is going to be on January 24th at the middle school. We also are scheduling our larger group workshops on February 7th and 14th. As I was here tonight, the 14th may change a little bit based on some availability, but we're very close to having those large group assemblies at middle school and high school scheduled. So, two different related purposes here, one is a real focus, small group intense training, train the trainer, trainer of leaders, and then the larger group is more of getting that and disseminating that message to the whole student body that are coming up in February. School Safety Update, just wanted to share what was shared out. This week we will be reviewing our ALICE protocols with all students, grades K to 12. These are scenarios, they're gonna be differentiated. At the, the younger levels, they may talk about, you know, strangers in the building, what should we do? How can we be safe? At the upper levels, it may be more specific. We kept the scenarios very similar to what we did last year, because we said that all the other variables are gonna be different. The kids are older, different group of kids, different classroom, different time of day. We, we're not disclosing exactly what time of day it is, cause we, we want people to realize that an emergency can happen at any moment, like a fire drill. And then there's, the most important part obviously is the debrief, the collection of questions from staff and students that we share out. So any parents that have questions or concerns can reach out to the principals, and that information has been shared with, with families as well. And so we shared, you know, for anyone that wants to do a little pre-teaching at home about violence, talking with kids about it, that resource was shared as well. So we wanted people to know it was coming, but we didn't want, you know, the exact moment. So if someone did need to opt out for some reason, they could have that discussion with the principals. But we're very aware of the trauma that can happen from drills. We're not doing any kind of simulations with gunshots or noises or alarms. It's a scenario-based discussion, and so hopefully with the proper supports, everyone will be able to participate. Finally, just as Mr. Buckley's alluded to, the James and Giant Peach is on sale. We sent out a few reminders, starting February first, second, and third. Really excited for this, for this production, so. That is, that is all that I have for my update.
Any correspondence?
None at this time, other than the items I share with you, calendars and things like that.
Um, future business, we have, we're gonna be at Special Town Meeting on Tuesday, January 30th, at 6:45 p.m. And then Monday and February 12th and February 26th, we have meetings at 6:30 each. That's it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye, so move.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Noel? I'm an aye as well, passes four zero. Feel better, Noel?
Feel better, take care.
Bye, everyone. Bye.
Bye.